I'm going to call our meeting to order. Thank you for being here. Please join me for the pledge allegiance. Us, for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that's okay. Okay, I would like a motion to approve tonight's agenda, please. So moved. Motion was moved by Commissioner Glickman and supported by Commissioner Petrie. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Okay, hearing none then. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed say no? That motion's carried. Now for the minutes. Commissioner Brady?
Motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held September 15th, 2025.
Support. Motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Glickman. Is there any discussion regarding the minutes? Okay, hearing none then. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed say no? That motion's carried. Thank you. Okay, now we're to the part of our agenda for public comments. If you'd like to speak this evening, just raise your hand and I will call on you. Sir, go ahead.
Thank you.
Please state your name and thank you.
Certainly. My name's Pat Letterly and I'm the president of Lapeer County Drop-Off Recycling. We're an all-volunteer nonprofit organization that's been around in the community for the last 12, 13 years. And our goal is to provide recycling opportunities for anyone in the county. Most of our demographic has been centered around Lapeer and the surrounding townships, but we do offer countywide services. And we do service about 800, by our estimation, 800 to 1,000 families in the county. And we've been partnering in the past with Rick Ryan to have a drop-off site available to us at Habitat for Humanity. He picks up the recycling and brings it down to a place in Troy called Sacra, which is a 12 municipal corporation. It's actually a corporation that was founded back in the '50s, so they've been doing recycling efforts for a long time. Our other major partner for a long time was Habitat for Humanity, north of town here. Yet, back in August, their board informed us that we would not be able to operate there any longer citing concerns over customer safety and potential liabilities associated with them. And so, our immediate goal is to find a new place to operate, a new partner to operate with, some property to operate on. And we're investigating all kinds of potential sites around the county, including some that are within the city limits. So we figured while we from the city commission, talk to you about what we're trying to accomplish and why. I think some of you may have seen a proposal that we've been vetting out there among different people that we've talked to. So we're trying to talk to the county, talk to the city, talk to development authorities, churches, schools, whoever we can talk to about this. I've been in discussion with Mike Womack, city manager, been very thankful for the information that he's been able to provide. So really what I'm here today is just to talk about some, what we've been up to, what we're trying to accomplish, and really ask you folks for any insights or ideas that you might have to where we may be able to operate once again and continue this drop-off recycling program that's been going on for the last 12 or 13 years.
I'm sorry, Pat, but the three minutes is up. You're welcome to finish up at the end if you'd like.
We do have another volunteer here.
Oh, okay.
Anne Claire, she's the secretary for our organization and she generally has a lot of useful information that I don't have on my fingertips, so thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I do wear a lot of hats for our nonprofit. One is which a data steward, I keep all of the data that we collect, whether it's how many cars come through, you're welcome. That's the main one, how many vehicles come through, how many, you know, pounds of plastic, how many bags of styrofoam that we take out of the environment. And so, what I handed to you is just what I call fun facts, or just some tidbits and some data that we like to keep to share whenever we're at the Spring Expo or anytime that we have an opportunity to talk to folks. So you can see since 2012, we've served 67, 386,000, 67,386 cars have come through through the lines. And that's a lot of vehicles and that's a lot of recycling out of the environment, so we're pretty proud of that. We serve 18 townships, five of which pave their residence. We encourage all the townships to try to do that and once in a while, we'll try to hit one of their township meetings to see if perhaps they would support their residents like the other ones do at this time. On any given Saturday in this year alone, we average about 314 cars, so it's a decent number. We have two lines that come through, we have a lot of steady folks that come and new folks all the time. The plastic film that we collected, we only started doing that maybe a year and a half ago, and it was a stunning, stunning amount that we received. We never imagined that we'd have what the people that wanted to do that. We average 200 pounds. That's the plastic film, like you would return to your grocery store. You never thought you'd see that kind of volume that comes in, and that's every Saturday that it comes in. So we really feel like we do an amazing service for this county and we're very grateful for the support and we're hopeful to find another partner. And as Pat said, if you have any ideas or thoughts for us, we're happy to hear and happy to partner with anybody who might be in the room listening, who knows? Anybody? But we really appreciate your time. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to talk?
Good evening. John DeAngelo. I just had one quick thing to talk to you about. I called Bill Green and Kevin Daly about just some of the comments Commissioner Atwood and Ken Womack had made about a bill possibly being over in Lansing where they would restrict what you do over here as far as building goes. And there's currently nothing that they're working on over there. Last year, there was four bills in the House, but they didn't get passed. They died December 29th. So as far as he knows and Kevin Daly knows, they also, Jamie Green made a little excessive. But nobody has anything going on over there that would restrict anything you're going to do on the building. Thanks.
Thank you.
Wake.
My name is Rick Schwab. I'm the pastor of Lapeer Community Church and I'm on the board for the Golden Arrow. And after some disparaging comments at the meeting last meeting, I felt like I just wanted to share. So about six years ago, I was watching a video on YouTube and it was a guy that did some inner-city ministry in Philadelphia. But he started actually by visiting Mother Teresa in Calcutta. And his ministry there was to find people who are dying in the streets and carry these dying people into the ministry and carry them and treat them well until they died. And I was so moved, I was like, there's nothing like that up here. I'm not just going to travel out every single day and find dying people. But then right as soon as I said that, he said, you know, Mother Teresa was famous for saying, there are Calcutta's everywhere, you just have to pray that God would open up your eyes to see them. So I said, well, I'll give it a shot. And so I prayed and I felt so stupid because we own a drug testing facility, we're drug addicts and people who struggle come in every day. And I realized many of them spent time at the Golden Arrow. So I called and said, I would like to volunteer. And he said, what would you like to do? I said, I don't know. He said, come in. And I came in and he just said, I'll tell you why, after spending some time with them. He said, get a cup of coffee, sit at that table, eventually people will talk to you. And he knew something that many people don't, is that there is value in being present and just being with people. And I will tell you that it's discouraging that we have an organization that actually cares for people, the most suffering people in our community and think it's a terrible thing. We are not better off by not caring for people who have nothing. And the Golden Arrow is a place where people can get warm in the winter, can get some food, can take a shower, can wash their clothes and find people who actually care about them. And it would be a travesty if we ever lost that place. Besides, it actually saves the community money when it helps them stay on their meds instead of winding up on the fourth floor of the hospital. So it's actually a benefit to our community when they have a place to go and there's people there that will help them get some help. Now, they're not always successful, but I will tell you that it's better to have a place that cares than have no place that does. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on then. Okay. Thank you.
Holy Spirit, we ask your presence here. We invite you. Thank you, Father, that you are a good, good Father. We need you. Lord, thank you for every person in here. I pray, Lord, that they will seek you because you are the only answer to everything. You know everybody's hearts, you know their motives, you know their past, present, and future. Thank you that that is in your hands because you are the only capable one. I ask that you be with people here tonight that need more of you, a little extra of you, this day, this week, this month. Lord, we need you every day, every minute of every day. Be with us in this meeting tonight. Lord, I ask for a special blessing for all these first responders that run to danger and literally risk their life for often people they don't even know. So similar to how Jesus gave His life to people that didn't know Him or cared that He did. So thank you, Lord, for your Son. Thank you for all the blessings that you give us. Thank you that you are the ultimate healer of everything. I pray that you be with us in this meeting, Lord. Give us peace, give us clarity, give us patience, give us courage, give us boldness if it needs to be brought, but mostly, Lord, give us love for each other and this community. I pray all these things in your very precious Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Now for the consent agenda. Commissioner Brady?
A motion to approve the consent agenda for October 6th, 2025.
Support. Motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Swendell. All those in favor of that motion say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no? That motion is carried. We're taking hold consent agenda. Thank you. Bill listing. Commissioner Brady?
A motion to approve the bill listing for October 6th, 2025 in the amount of $434,064.89.
Support. Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Swendell. Is there discussion or questions on the bill listing? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, vote, please.
Excuse me, Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Swendell?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Okay, now it's time in the agenda for proclamation. It is my honor to be able to read this. Proclamation and recognition of Thomas Wiki, whereas Thomas, Tom Wiki officially began his employment with the city of Lapeer on October 1st, 1985, as a paid on-call firefighter and whereas through dedication and leadership, Tom was promoted to lieutenant on June 1st, 1995, then to captain on July 1st, 2001, and ultimately to division chief on October 1st, 2016. And whereas his four decades of service have left a lasting legacy within the Lapeer Fire and Rescue Department, where his leadership, mentorship, and expertise have strengthened the department and inspired countless colleagues. And whereas Tom's contributions have extended beyond the firehouse, reflecting a spirit of selflessness and a devotion to the safety and well-being of the entire community. And whereas Tom has been an invaluable asset to the city throughout his career, serving with dedication, integrity, and distinction. And whereas Tom will retire in October 10th, 2025, after more than 40 years of service to the city of Lapeer, leaving behind colleagues and a community proud to have known and served with him. Now therefore, let it be known that I, Mayor Debbie Marquardt, along with the Lapeer City Commission, do hereby honor and express our deepest appreciation to the division chief, Thomas Wiki, for his dedicated public service and wish him continued health, happiness, and fulfillment in his retirement, dated the 6th day of October, 2025. I'm going to make the motion first and then I'm going to have you come back or just stay there. So.
Motion, please. Motion to approve the proclamation in recognition of Tom Wiki. Yes, presented.
Second. Motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Petrie. Discussion, no discussion. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed say no? Motion's carried. Yay!
Yeah, thank you.
Great.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, just a pause for a few seconds, let the exit room outside and take a couple photographs.
Absolutely. Go ahead. Anybody who wants to leave at this time? Feel free.
Get that out to the sign out front there, take some photos.
Can we come through? No. Stand through the sign.
Yeah.
Did you get all the pictures needed, John?
Yeah.
Okay. So one will be in the paper, right? Okay. There are no public hearings this evening, so the next thing on the agenda is the G1, the Cooperative Mutual Aid Fire Control Agreement with the DNR.
Madam Mayor, we make a motion to approve the execution of the Cooperative Mutual Aid Fire Control Agreement PR 4274 with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, Forest Resources Division, and authorize the mayor and fire chief to sign on behalf of the city of Lapeer.
Motion was made by Commissioner Swendell and supported by Commissioner Glickman. Is there discussion regarding this? Commissioner Petrie?
I have a few questions, but I don't know if they can be answered here or if he needs to answer them. I'm wondering why have we not renewed this since 2007? I was looking at all the other stations, some have, some haven't, and I'm just wondering what, why haven't we?
I think the dirty little secret be that sometimes we forget and sometimes the DNR forgets, so we just carry on under the old agreement, tell somebody, says, hey, we should have renewed that back in whatever. So that's, nothing's changed as far as I'm aware.
Okay. The other question is, I know that the DNR, some of the outlying fire departments are more rural than us, the DNR actually gives them equipment, a truck or something. Will we be getting any equipment from them? And if so, do we hold all the insurance on that? I just...
So I don't know about getting equipment. I know that we're eligible for DNR grants and for DNR equipment, but I don't know if we're going to be automatically given something based on the agreement.
Do you have another question? Kind of looks like you're thinking about...
Well, while you're thinking about it, we do have a brush fire truck that we have that's certainly DNR-funded.
Yeah. I knew that and I wondered if we just use that in replacement of what they may give to us or...
So in my previous community, we had a 1965 truck that we used, yeah, diesel and it was like two speeds, that we used to fight brush fires and then they eventually replaced it with like a 1993 model. And I'm sure that Chief could answer those questions.
Just gonna take perfect timing, G1. We're on our G1 for that Cooperative Mutual Aid Fire Control Agreement with the DNR. Commissioner Petrie has a couple of questions that were positive.
My two questions were, if, why haven't we kept up on this if it was 2007? Did it just slip through the cracks or, or we just already knew we were mutually giving aid or...
No, this was a housekeeping issue that was missed by us and the state. If you look, the state provided a bunch of historical records. There are people that have missed the renewal agreement dating back to the early 2000s all the way to now. So the state made some changes within their DNR forestry division, which prompted the audit, which found that a lot of municipalities had...
Had missed it. I saw that. My other question was, I know that in the outlying fire stations, they, the DNR provides equipment, sometimes a truck or something for them. Would they be providing us for anything or would we just use our own equipment?
Yeah, typically there is a program to where you can get retired equipment through the state or through the federal government. The DNR has done that historically. Usually by the time it gets to us or to other fire departments, it is so dilapidated that it would not be serviceable for what we use. For our purposes, this agreement would allow the DNR to come in and to assist us. Very rarely would we ever have to assist them unless they're doing a controlled burn on state land, it's out of control, and they would call us to assist them.
And we'd use our own equipment because it's more efficient?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Well, then, all those in favor of the motion say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no? That motion's carried. The flock camera system. Commissioner Petrie?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this motion until the lawsuit that's pending right now in Norfolk, Virginia, and there's another one in Washington, till those are settled. Because I just think it would be dereliction of our duty to invite any lawsuit that's still pending. I don't know if Mr. Francis, the one in Norfolk, Virginia is supposed to be settled this month sometime, but I don't want to get the city or one of them, I think it's in Washington, they're actually suing the chief of police and I don't want that for our community for sure. So I just think until that's settled, just would like to postpone this.
Second. So motion was made to postpone until the two lawsuits are settled by Commissioner Petrie and supported by Commissioner Glickman, but can you...
Madam Mayor, I think under Robert's rules, you can't postpone unless he chooses a specific date. So we may want to pick a date which, Commissioner Petrie, when did you say that you expected?
It says that, and they keep pushing it back, it's supposed to be settled the month of October and we're in October. The Washington one, I don't know.
That's exactly what I was going to ask.
Maybe in November, we could revisit the issue at that point to see if...
And see what, yeah, see what...
So would you like to pick a date in November? First or second regular meeting?
The second meeting in November.
It's 17.
Okay, so postponed until November 17th.
Ms. Glickman's indicated her second amendment.
Okay, is there any additional discussion on the motion? Commissioner Atwood?
Is there a legal opinion at this time that our city attorney might have?
I'm not sure if Mr. Francis has reviewed it. I've reviewed the lawsuits and I don't find a lot of merit in their claims. Of course, you can sue somebody for having blue eyes, that doesn't mean it's true or has a lot of merit to it. Something I would state is that the state of Michigan and the county of Lapeer has how many cameras in operation, are you chief?
Memorial Township has several and all of the district permits looking at adding 26.
So if we were to be sued, we'd be in very good company, I think. I just, I didn't find a lot of merit in it, but that's just my opinion and of course, I could be wrong.
I'm aware of them. I have not reviewed the pleadings or kept up with them. I'm aware generally that the lawsuits exist, so I do not have a legal opinion. I have clients who have purchased the flock system who aren't involved in any litigation. That's, you know, all that I can say about that. What was the date again?
The second meeting in November. November 17th.
One thing I would be concerned about is, you know, court cases take years, decades to resolve. I'd be afraid that we're, you know, inappropriately setting this off for years and decades if it doesn't resolve in November.
Commissioner Petrie?
Well, my concern too is the case in Washington is the city already established them, bought the cameras, had them working. Somebody from the public wanted information from them, they were denied, and so then they sued because it should be open to the public, blah, blah, blah. And so I just, I want to make sure that we're doing the smart, safe thing and avoiding lawsuits if at all possible.
Commissioner Brady?
I'll defer.
Commissioner Swendell?
So that's why, is that why we said we need to have an ordinance for that first? Have the rules, have the policy set up so that we aren't sued? If someone wants something off of it, our policy says we don't give that up to the public. That is for, it has one use and one use only. Have you, have we started on...
Could you answer that for us?
Sure. So Chief How and I worked through a policy together. City attorney reviewed the policy, we reviewed the revisions of the policy, and then we discussed FOIA, Freedom of Information Act. And it's our belief that the policy, similar to lean policy, would not be... And it's our belief that the policy, similar to lean policy, would not be FOI-able under Michigan law.
The thing that the court case in Washington says that they were violating the Public Records Act by not providing the footage. So that's, you know, we're saying that it's not FOI-able, but I'm just throwing it out there. Just better safe than sorry is my thought.
Okay, hold, the motion is to postpone this until the second meeting in November, which I believe is November 17th. All those in favor of the motion say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no.
No.
That motion's carried. Okay, wastewater treatment plant.
Madam Mayor?
Commissioner Brady?
Motion to approve the purchase and installation of one taco-based mount, taco-based mounted recirculating pump and one four-inch taco air separator from Johnson &amp; Wood Mechanical Contractors for a total cost of $30,372.
Motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported...
It's TACO.
I was hoping we were getting some taco air separator.
Actually, when I went down, I thought, I was getting kind of... I was there for dinner, actually, this afternoon.
Remind me to ask the superintendent to not use acronyms.
Anyway, the motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Petrie?
Yep.
Just for the clarification of the public, could you maybe describe what this actually does?
Oh, I would totally...
Or maybe Ross could?
...if I really understood it.
Ew, no.
Yeah, it's...
It's all right stuff.
Well, we need to know what it does. So those wastewater treatment plant operators are their own special breed and, you know, the basics, of course, are you introducing air and water and heat into the slurry mix so that the bugs can eat all the, you know, digestible matter, which then settles down to a very low moisture content, you know, sludge, which then is, you know, either removed to a landfill or land applied. So TACO-based, Madam Clerk, how did you know what TACO meant or TACO is pronounced? You have some special knowledge, I don't on this one?
Ramona, would you help? I talked to the wastewater treatment plant supervisor and said, what's a taco? And he said it's TACO and it's parts that have to be replaced for the installment of the new boiler system.
Okay. Any other questions there? Okay, here are no more questions.
Madam Mayor, could I read from the memo if that would help?
No, that's good.
I think we're good on tacos. Yeah, we're good with tacos. Okay, so all those in favor of the motion?
Roll call.
Roll call, sorry, roll call.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Swindell?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Forgot my yellow highlighter. Okay, the wastewater treatment plant oxidation ditch control. Commissioner Brady?
Motion to approve the proposal with Taplin Enterprises for an oxidation ditch sludge removal and cleanout of one oxidation tank at the wastewater treatment plant for an amount not to exceed $162,770.59 and authorize the superintendent of the wastewater treatment plant to sign all necessary documents.
Support. Motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Glickman. Is there discussion on this motion? Oh, we know what oxidation ditches are. Okay, all the, roll call.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Swindell?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Motion's carried. The MLCC social district permit.
Madam Mayor?
Commissioner Swindell?
I move to adopt the resolution recommending Liquor Craft LLC be considered for approval of the social district permit as presented.
Support.
Motion was made by Commissioner Swindell and supported by Commissioner Atwood. Is there discussion on this one?
I just have a question. I don't know if it's for you or for Ramona or whoever handles that, but...
We'll see and then we'll ask.
Well, I just wondered, we're transferring basically, but then who does all the background check and all that? Does Ramona have to do all that or the state?
Do you want me to answer that one?
Sure.
So you don't have any role in approving the transfer of the actual license. In fact, social permits aren't transferable, so you're approving the new licensee to the extent that liquor control approves the transfer of the license to that licensee.
And that all happens at the state level?
State approves whether they're, you know, a qualified licensee, no convictions that are disqualifying or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? Okay, then, roll call vote again, please.
Commissioner Swindell?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Parking lot number nine repair sanitary sewer main. Commissioner Swindell?
Make a motion to authorize the award of contract to Great Lakes Direction Aboring for the repair of a collapsing 130-foot section of 12-inch sanitary sewer main in the amount not to exceed $19,225.
Support.
Motion was made by Commissioner Swindell and supported by Commissioner Brady. Is there a discussion on this one? Commissioner Petrie?
I emailed Mike and spoke to him a little bit about it and he said he knew that I would ask questions and...
Which we appreciate.
That's what I'm supposed to do. I just have a question for Ross. I don't need to go into what you chose to do, but I'm wondering, is this permanent, is this the permanent fix or when we do the parking lot next year, will we have to do like the whole thing?
This is a permanent fix, yes.
Okay, so you won't have to do it again? Okay.
Commissioner Brady?
Sorry, I gotta just jump in for a second. So I just feel like we need to say it's permanent insofar as these things last 60, 70 years, right? Because we, well, because we have sewer on the ground that's 60, 70 years old and then we're starting to replace it, so to the extent that that's permanent.
Commissioner Brady?
I think the question I have is, you know, knowing that we're going to redo the parking lot, how much surface repair are we planning on doing? Like, is it going to be dug up? Is it going to be rough patch? What are we...
So we talked about that because we want to minimize the costs, obviously. I think we're doing cold patch out there, which is pretty easy, pretty cheap. So it's not a significant additional cost and then we'll fix it once we do the parking lot.
One more question, Mike, or Ross? Will that be done before winter? Are we hoping to do that?
The cold patch, yeah, we have to make it AD compliant and safe.
So that pipe will be replaced soon?
Yeah, it's an emergency. I mean, at the last minute, we talked about just doing it as part of the project next year, but I don't think there's a substantial savings from, I mean, there is, there's a savings, but it's not substantial if we do it as part of the project. We're fearful that it would collapse during the winter because that's when these things happen. And this way, the businesses will be closed for one to two days versus four to five days and they can plan what date it's going to occur.
They plan or we plan or we...
Hopefully, we can still plan, but we'll have to, we'll be talking to the businesses and trying to figure out the best day to do it.
That was my next question, how much time will they be out? One to two?
Ross, do you have a kind of idea of when we're expecting to try and do this?
I would expect it to be done in the next couple of weeks.
And we are working with Mr. Alt and the DDA to keep in touch with the businesses.
Any more questions? Okay, I believe we're ready for that roll call vote.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Swindell?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Now for the water tower demolition.
Madam Mayor? Make a motion to approve the contract with H2O Towers LLC to provide services for the demolition of 125-foot, 750,000-gallon water tower for an amount not to exceed $97,500 and authorize the city manager and director of Department of Public Works to sign the necessary documents.
Motion's been made, is there support? Motion was made by Commissioner Swindell and supported by Commissioner Brady. Discussion. Commissioner Petrie?
I have a lot of concerns about this. Spoke to Mike and I spoke to Ross about it, looking at the engineer's report from 2020, it's five years old, and it was geared toward saving the water tower. And I need to preface all my comments with, I don't have an opinion on whether we should or shouldn't demolish. I'm not an engineer, so I don't know the correct answer on that. However, there were more questions than answers with H2O bid than the bid that we got back in '23 for demolition. That one was more thorough. Also, it was more costly and I understand that, but this is a huge project that comes with a lot of question marks. One of the things that 21st Century Salvage did for us back in '23, they had a section for special conditions. And under the special conditions, they let us know what their insurance was. They actually had an umbrella of $9 million. They talked about the asbestos and lead survey. They talked about lead abatement, that it wasn't included in that proposal. We know that there's lead inside and out of this water tower. They were very, very thorough in what they would and wouldn't handle. This bid left many questions. For instance, the first bid in '23 said that they would be having the crane or the heavy equipment there for 30 days about that. The second one didn't talk about heavy equipment or any of that. It talked about labor. We'll supply all labor and materials necessary, but it didn't actually specifically say anything about that equipment. It does say that they'll mobilize equipment and supplies, but it doesn't say what equipment or for how long. I was very concerned about it saying that they would start weakening the structure. And then the next day, they'll make a call if all the conditions are right, which I don't know who will determine if all the conditions are right and the structure ready and that they'd have it down in about a two-hour come. Also, there's nothing in here about the hospital. That's a huge concern to me. We can't take a chance that we would disrupt their services for 10 minutes. We just can't. I'm very concerned about the lead. If that water tower falls and there's sludge in there that contains lead and seeps into the ground, what will be the cost of us taking care of that? I want, I don't know if I want to take it down or not. I just want to know that if we are going to take it down, we take every precaution to keep our community safe and our cost, I don't want to incur further cost. One more thing, I talked to the Flushing city manager who is actually in the process of, they just approved taking their water tower down. And she said that their engineer that they hired, which was Dixon, which is who we hired five years ago, they're handling all of it. They actually got the bids to handle the legalities, the bonds, the insurance. The engineer determined who was the most qualified to do the work. And I, while I want to be responsible financially, if we have to spend a little extra for safety, that is my, my vote. Flushing got Isler demolition and they're out of Port Hope, Michigan. That's who will be doing their demolition. I called a couple other demolition places that do water towers and I just feel like we, this is not, we're not taking the shed down in somebody's backyard. This is a huge project that contains possibly some toxic stuff. I want to be sure that we are taking every precaution and doing our due diligence. There's no, according to the, according to the engineer's report five years ago, we are not in imminent danger of it falling. So my thought on this was waiting till the spring and in that time, hire an engineer that's going to look at tearing it down, not, not keeping it standing. It feels like that would be due diligence and we've covered every base. So like I said, I don't have an opinion on whether we should or shouldn't take it down. I want our community to be safe and to be, I want to pay the right amount of money for the right amount of safety, so.
Any other comments?
I'll make a comment.
Okay.
I don't think that we need to move forward with the low bid because it is a low bid unless we put side by side what the high bid was, what all they cover. I'm a diagram person and a checkoff person. I want to see them side by side because it appears to me that the new bid has holes in it. It's kind of like Swiss cheese and it's like if everything goes okay, it's going to be fine. But if there's a problem, then we're going to be stuck for extra money. And I am with Commissioner Petrie in that I would rather see another engineer come out at this point and tell us what is the best way.
So can I just respond just for a second? So I understand that one bid proposal is a little more in-depth than the other, but it's just a bid proposal. You know, that's not the contract to perform services. And, you know, one of the alternatives we presented today was, you know, give us the authorization to move forward to get the contract, to review the contract, to spell out all the things that you're indicating you're concerned about, which I'm concerned about as well. But I also don't want to waste everybody's time and waste money if we're not going to move forward, or at least if there's a pretty good chance of going to move forward. You know, hiring engineers, doing all this extra work, it costs time and money and if there's not at least, you know, a decent support on the board, I don't see why we'd want to move forward even on that part of it. So that's an alternative I presented to you guys, you know?
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I understand that we would vote to move forward on it, but I would want to know that I can vote on the contract after the fact because a lot of times we vote on things to move forward and things get done that we weren't really aware of. So I would want to make sure that we get the opportunity to vote on the contracts themselves. And I don't see the rush unless an engineer comes in and says, oh my gosh, it's going to fall down in a week. I think we have to be really judicious here. That's a big item to take down. And personally, I don't think it serves a purpose. I'll be, I'll be fine with it coming down, but I haven't lived my whole life here and I'm sure there's going to be some citizens that are going to, it's going to break their heart, but I, I really want to see what that contract is going to say.
Commissioner Brady?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, looking at this, so this says, the motion says to approve the contract, but maybe in reflection, it's more of a bid or a proposal? What we've seen so far? I mean, we could sign that today and that would be, that would be the total piece of paper? That spells out everything that we have. It seems to me more like a proposal.
Really, what you'd be approving is for the staff to move forward with a contract that meets my requirements, DWD's requirements and city attorney's requirements before we actually did it. The alternative is we do all that work and then bring the final contract back to the board for final approval. Because I understand that there's lots of concerns here and we want to do what's comfortable, what makes the board comfortable. I just don't want to move forward at all if we're not going to at least seriously consider doing it.
Madam Mayor, I withdraw my support.
Was that Commissioner Atwood?
Is there, you might not know the answer, but legal opinion on structures, that height or size, if it does have to have engineering...
I don't have a legal opinion on that, I don't look at that issue. I generally would say that, I mean, I'll pick up with the help, but I haven't looked specifically at any issues.
Okay, well, currently there is no motion. Well, there's a motion, but there's no support on the floor, so technically...
I just want to make sure we're...
...continuing to discuss.
Yeah, let's be clear about something. We're not talking about just going full force without an engineer present or talking about this. I understand there's exterior engineers like Dixon or city engineer, but, you know, this demo company is going to have their own inside engineers that work on this project. So I just don't want to make it sound like we're going to go out there and yee-haw and pull it down for fun. It's going to be done safely.
The bid doesn't indicate any engineer present or...
Because it's not always going to be in the bid, it would be in the contract.
Commissioner Brady?
I'd like the commission to give our city manager direction to move forward with acquiring a contract that he can bring back to us that's got all the attorney oversight and Ts crossed and Is dotted so that we can approve it.
And where am I at exactly? The motion was there, the support has been with... And where am I at exactly? With, the motion was there, the support has been withdrawn, so that makes that motion, no, invalid, correct?
No action.
It's no action. So, okay. So, therefore, then a new motion could be made. No? Yes? Correct? No?
As I just stated. Yes.
Repeat one more time.
Sure. I think that we should direct our city manager to pursue a contract with H2O Towers and make sure that it gets attorney review, period.
And bring it back.
And bring it back to us.
Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Atwood. Is there further discussion on this motion? Commissioner?
This is a huge project. I'll say it again. So, just pursuing one contract or one bid, one organization, is not what we are supposed to do. So, I don't agree with that. I think we need to bring back three. I mean, we got, we got H2O, we got the 21, or 21st Century. They're very, there's a huge disparity in the amount. So, the smart thing, in my opinion, would be at least one more.
Are you looking for more bids?
I'm looking for more people that do the demolition and their costs, instead of just pursuing one, because we have two.
The actual takedown?
Absolutely. And that's why, right, that's why the Flushing City Manager had her engineer handle that, because they knew the specifics, all of that. They sought the bids and came up with one that they felt most qualified, and then brought it to their city council. And I feel like that's a wise thing, because then we're looking out for everybody, and we're following our policy.
So, Ms. Petrie, let's make sure we're not misleading anybody. We pursued six, seven different companies, Ross. We've only heard back from two or three of them.
I talked to two today.
Okay. Did you get bids?
They're calling me back for the bid, but we're happy to give a bid. And I don't need the bid, because it's not my job. But my point is, we, we need to do that on this big of a project. They'll call me back, is what they said. I'd be happy to pass that on. But we have, we have places in Michigan that do it. Isler is one of them.
Did you happen to hear from the Flushing City Manager how much they paid their engineers to do the work that you're proposing?
I didn't, I didn't ask her that, because I knew that we have an in-house one. I don't know if they do that, but I just was researching so that I could make an informed decision on how I wanted to vote.
So, I mean, as we, we talked, you know, this is always a balancing act about how much money do you want to spend to accomplish the goal, right, safely?
Yeah.
I don't have a dog in this fight. If we want to hire Dixon, we can hire Dixon. We want to hire Rowe, we can hire Rowe. We can do any number of things. But what we have in front of us is, from what I can tell, a qualified group that's willing to do it for one quarter of what we originally proposed to do it for. And that seems like a smart use of the taxpayers' money.
But why is it only one quarter compared to the other one? I mean, if you do compare them side by side, they're, like Linda said, there's many holes. So, we, I'm not an engineer, you're not an engineer. I, I can't say that that bid is, one is better than the other. I just can see that one costs more than the other, and one has more details covering us as a city. So, I'm just saying.
In the bid proposal, not the contract. So, if we brought back the contract that met your concerns, would you be then willing to support that?
Like I said, I'd like to look at three bids that are close to the same price. These are very, very different. So, I'm asking.
There are a couple steps, actually, be aware, that they would submit the bids, and then you would have to select from there before you go to the contract. But the motion was for.
To get a contract from H2O.
Yeah. So, that's the motion.
Who, in my opinion, has brought us the best bid. So, that's why the next step is to get a full contract from them.
The best bid financially, the cost, the cost of it.
It seems to be what they do.
It's all they do.
Well, right, but same with the other one. It just was a really different price and different details. So.
We'll see the contract back in front of us if we go to Israel.
So, the motion was on the floor, and I think we've discussed. So, it'd be.
Can I read back the motion, make sure that I got Commissioner Brady's?
Please.
I have direct the city manager to pursue a contract with H2O Towers LLC. I did twice. With acquiring a contract that has been reviewed by the city attorney and bring it back to the city commission for review and approval.
Okay. So, there's no technical dollars attached to that motion. So, it's been discussed. All those in favor, the motions say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say don't?
No.
No.
Motion's carried. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Womack, you've got your city manager's report now.
As if we didn't have enough controversial things on our agenda personally.
Well, it's okay. They're all very important issues.
Yeah. So, the city has a bicycle ordinance, which is tragically out of date. It includes requirements that all bicycles in the city have to be registered and plated with the police department, which we don't do, thankfully. So, I decided to take a whack at it to not only kind of update it, modernize it, make it reflect both current and best practices, but to address the electrical bike craze, the battery bike craze, which is kind of sweeping, you know, this area and frankly, all other communities in Michigan. So, I did a lot of research on this. There's actually not a lot of bid ordinances on point. There's a couple college towns which have, you know, taken a whack at it, and I use those as a base for kind of addressing some of the concerns. You know, so for, just for the public's benefit, there are three levels of electric bike. Class one, class two, class three. Class one is pedal assisted up to 20 miles per hour. Class two is up to 20 miles per hour, but doesn't necessarily have to be pedal assisted, you know, it's going to be a throttle. And then class three is also supposed to be pedal assisted up to 28 miles per hour. Part of the problem, of course, is that, you know, people have been, forgive me for saying this, because this is my dad's words coming out right now, they've been hot rodding these bikes. And so, they're more like electric motorcycles at this point. So, you know, we've got a number of people that I personally observe driving these rather recklessly, both throughout the town and also on our trails. So, I do need some policy direction from the commission, and that's why it's not been presented to you as a ordinance at this point, just a discussion. And hopefully, if I get direction, the city attorney and I can work on it over the next week or so, we can bring back the proposed draft ordinance for first reading at your next meeting. So, of course, I was just handed another review just before this meeting, which I didn't get a chance to get to. So, all sorts of people have thoughts on this. So, page 122 of the PDF, you know, it's basically, I've tried to establish where these various classes of bikes can operate here in this community. So, I've highlighted that in green, some policy direction I need from the board. All right. So, first one is, all bicycles and e-bikes operating or being ridden on unpaved trails in the city of Leupihr must have operable pedals and be wholly or partially powered by human muscle. One of the complaints I've received from the regular riders of the trail is that people are hot rodding their electric bikes, and then just, without any effort, throttling it up to 30-plus miles an hour and jumping off, you know, bumps out there. So, their concern was that by doing that, those bikes are very heavy. They're 70-ish pounds or so, that they're helping ruin the trails by, you know, creating ruts and breaking various elements out there. So, they asked me to make it so that you've had to pedal if you're going to be riding an e-bike on an unpaved trail. Second one, class one and class three e-bikes are allowed to operate or ride on the highway, roadway, sidewalk, or paved or unpaved trail in the city of Leupihr. So, basically, complementing what the first one was, which is if you're pedaling it, it can basically go anywhere. Next one is class two e-bikes, those are the throttle-only, are permitted to operate or ride on the highway, roadway, sidewalk, or paved trail, but not unpaved. Then, we've kind of had to create a new definition here. So, the class one through three, that's steep definitions that we're incorporating. Anything that's been, again, forgive me for saying this, hot rodded, we're going to call it electric motorcycles. And so, those are permitted on the highway and roadway in the city of Leupihr, but shall not be operated on the sidewalk, paved trail, or unpaved trail. And then, similar for dirt bikes and ORVs. So, I need direction from the board about whether they like that, don't like that, would like to see changes, et cetera.
Commissioner Atwood.
You already know I don't like that.
Because you had to be notes just before the meeting, yeah.
Don't make up.
So, class one, I feel should be allowed on all pathways, paved, unpaved, roadways, sidewalk. Class three can reach speeds of 28 miles an hour. It should not be allowed on sidewalks, paved, or unpaved trails in the city. It should be roads only.
So, I did, so I did somewhere else in this ordinance, put a speed limit. We're going to address that in a second. I guess my thought process was, yes, I get that class three can go 28, but if we're limiting speed theoretically.
15 miles per hour.
That'd be hard to police in the.
This entire ordinance, this entire ordinance will be difficult to police.
Well, I'm saying, like, for instance, the Trails of Oakdale, if I had a bike, I'd go 28 miles per hour.
I'm going 29.
I'm going 28 miles an hour on the jumps. That, that would be hard to police back there. And then also on the paved trails, it gets walked a lot by, all year round.
Yeah.
So, I would like to see class three really only allowed on the, on the roads. It's basically a moped. If, I mean, it's not classified as a moped, obviously, but.
There is a difference between an electric moped and a class three.
Yeah, there is. Class two, I'm up on the air about, do we allow class two on sidewalks, paved or unpaved? They go the same speed, but the difference is it's more throttle. I mean, I don't know if you can tear up a trail throttle-based. That one, I'm kind of up in the air on. So, the electric, if I may, the electric dirt bike is technically not road legal, so it is classified as ORV. So, unless it goes through the proper procedures of becoming street legal by acquiring a VIN, the mirrors, the blinkers, the, the lights, all the things, so I have to go through a bunch of steps to become.
Given this, that little title.
Yeah, to become road legal. So, technically, that is considered an ORV by the state, which we don't have an ORV ordinance. And I don't know if that would have to be a separate ordinance all in itself, or if we can include it in this one, I'm not sure. But, to me, the big one was, class three shouldn't be on sidewalks or paved or unpaved trail. Class one should be allowed either the road, sidewalks, paved, unpaved trail. Class two, I'm, you know, I'm thinking of safety for the pedestrians, as those can get up to speed, I think, a little bit quicker than pedal assist. I could be wrong. But also, the, the safety back in the trail, as well, as there are some obstacles. But I'm willing to hear other, other concerns. That was my, my issue with the wording and verbiage at this point.
Commissioner Brady, you got your hand up.
Yeah, I think you can try to classify them however you want. You can, if you buy a class one, two, or three from the store, it has a little sticker on there that says class one, two, or three, but you can buy what looks like, what looks like, well, just a stock, you know, from one of many different wholesalers. It looks just like a bike, but it's got a motor and it's got a battery, and they reach speeds of up to 40 miles an hour. And they're incredibly dangerous, but, you know, and fun, I would think, in the right, the right scenario, right? For me, like, if we asked Chief Howe, like, how, how would he enforce that? What's the point of writing a law that you can't enforce? I would, I would say, like, 15 miles an hour on the sidewalk is potentially enforceable. You could see somebody going fast on the sidewalk, and you could stop them and say, hey, you have to slow down. So.
So, let's, again, let's not mislead the public and think that we can't enforce this, right? Part of this is, you know, I want to give my staff the, you know, the direction from the council about what do we want to see in the community. If we say only class one bikes are allowed on the Oakdale Trails, we're going to not be putting signs out there saying only class one. And the hope is that the majority of people would then self-police, right?
That's what's already out there.
So, you know, and then if somebody's out there just ripping and roaring and doing crazy stuff, we'd hope that other users would then contact, you know, the police for enforcement if necessary. You know, you're right. We're not going to have, I don't know, maybe Chief has other ideas, but we're not going to be setting up a speed trap on the sidewalk for somebody doing 16 miles an hour, right? But, you know, and this all, this is all going to result with the legal status of this stuff is in Michigan in general. You know, if you, as a bicyclist, are doing 25 miles an hour on a sidewalk, and then you hit somebody from behind, you know, you're going to hurt that person, and there's going to be a lawsuit. And part of that lawsuit is going to be, well, bicyclist, did you violate any city laws while you were acting recklessly while driving your bicycle? Well, one of those laws is, were you driving faster than 10 or 15 miles per hour, right? So, you know, are we going to go out and strictly enforce that? Almost certainly not. But, you know, you want to put it in somebody's head that, hey, the state, the city's saying this is dangerous. I should think about the passing of.
I like the speed limit the best of all of it, so.
Okay. Commissioner Swindell?
Speed limits are great, but I don't think anything that goes 28 miles an hour should be on our paved trails. I don't think they should be on our sidewalks, because as a mother who's raised four boys in the Kool-Aid House, I will tell you, if it goes 28, they're going to ride at 28, 100%, like, just because they can, right? I can tell, we can tell all the children. But if it goes 28, 28 is way too fast. They're going to go 28. There was a, literally, there was a dude riding a wheelie from Court Street all the way down here, when I was standing out front earlier. That was faster than 25, if I had guessed. But if it goes 28, going around a corner, this time here, the leaves are falling me out a little bit more slightly, no matter which trails you're on. But in the summer, on full-on summers, you can't see going around some of those corners and some of those hills. If I'm walking my grandson with his stroller in the trail, and a bike comes around a corner 28 miles an hour, I'm not going to be very happy about it. Like, you know what I mean? I'm going to be the one that has to jump out of the way, not, the bike isn't paying attention. It goes, it's the same way in the trails when I go up north to ride, or bike, side by side, whatever. It's the same way. You have to watch out for other people. But if a bike goes 28, and there's, you know, a 12-year-old, and someone put their 10- or 12-year-old on a bicycle that goes 28 miles an hour and sends them to the trail, they're not going to go, I have to stay under 15. It's just not the same. It's just, just not, I mean, we can tell them and we can urge them, but if the bike goes 28, 28 is way too fast for a sidewalk or a paved trail, even the dirt trails. Like, those bicycles don't go very fast either back there.
Okay. Commissioner Petrie?
I'm, I'm concerned about sidewalks, period. I'm thinking about downtown mostly, because we have a lot of pedestrians downtown coming in and out of stores. Sometimes, when you walk out of a store, you're not going to see a bicycle even going 10 miles an hour on the sidewalk. That can hurt somebody, a child or an adult. And so, I'm concerned about bikes on the sidewalk. Can we, can we regulate, like, sidewalks over by Crampton Park? We don't really have a lot of pedestrians on those sidewalks, so I feel fine about that, but we have a lot of pedestrians downtown on the sidewalks. Can we have signage that says, please walk your bike, when you're in the DDA district, or when you're in this nevastic, you know, if they're, because we do have people walking out of, when you're walking out of a store, you don't look both ways. Most people don't. Most people don't, they just walk out of stores. So.
You'll be happy to know that is absolutely in this ordinance. Subsection C1, no person except for persons with disabilities or physical limitations shall operate or ride such vehicle upon a sidewalk or pedestrian mall areas adjacent to Nevising Street between Mason Street and Saginaw Street.
And will we also have signage that rules them?
One more question.
Well, I'll just back up with Commissioner Swindell said, I think there's a lot of people don't appreciate the lethality, lethality, lethality of speed. I know somebody was doing 15 miles per hour on a bicycle, and ended up with lifelong injuries from crashing that bike at 15 miles an hour. Wearing a helmet, crashed on a soft gravel path, they hit a, one of those metal barricades that kind of blocked off the edge. She's got one of those, what do you call them, things that, you know, helps her, you know, sort of digest the food in her stomach. Yeah, colostrum bag now. 28 miles per hour is absolutely lethal. And, you know, I, I think adults who spent their lifetime riding bikes, consume, I mean, I've got a road bike, I can do maybe 22 on my road bike. But that takes a lot of skill, and I can't do it now, 'cause I put on 20 pounds on something, but 28 miles per hour, if you have to put in the time and effort to be able to ride safely at 28 miles per hour, I think it's dangerous.
Maybe it's dangerous when you're mixing that with questions.
I just have a question about bike routes. One of our previous meetings, we were talking about people who wanted to ride their bike, let's say to Kroger or Meyer, if there wasn't a marked bike route. So I was just curious if that's being looked at, or has it been resolved? Do we mark all the bike routes?
So we've got a non-motorized plan that's coming up, that we got grant dollars for, I'm assuming that's gonna be a huge part of that. Now, from what I got, that conversation though, was Mr. Atwood wants to see Class 3 is limited to roads, roads and highways only. Was there any other substantive changes to that section?
The one I was up in the air about was Class 2.
Well, does anybody have any input on Class 2?
My e-bike is a Class 2, and it, it's, it has a throttle, but it doesn't mean, I mean, it's an older model, but it's, I still have to pedal it. I can just, it's, when I get up to speed, and I can hold the throttle open, that, that would be the main differences. You can, you can get going 20 miles an hour, and then continue going 20 miles an hour, but I could do the same thing, just pedaling. Like, it's got a, it's got a pedal assist, it doesn't take a lot of work. As long as your pedals are turning, the sensor says, give power to the motor, so.
Do you see any issues like back at the trails, like, safety wise?
No, it would be, it would be more work to hold the throttle down than it would be to just get back on my pedals and pedal.
Mr. Brady, you and I discussed this issue, isn't Class 2 the most common e-bike that's up there, too?
I, I think it is. Class 1s are kind of a specialty, because those are the ones that are usually allowed on trails. But they're not, they're not as user-friendly. Most people going to the store are gonna be buying the Class 2, from what I can tell. Although they are getting bigger and more powerful.
I think if it has a throttle, it's an ORV, period. It's an ATV or an ORV. I don't, if the bike can go 20 miles an hour, somebody's gonna do it. If it can go 28, somebody's gonna do it.
They do also have like software limitations, where you can change the speed.
Okay, but have you met my son's end, because trust and believe, he would hack that up and hot-ride it.
All right. So, second part I need is on page 125. So this is the speed limit section. Unless otherwise posted or authorized, no person shall ride upon a paved trail or sidewalk more than five feet wide at a speed greater than 15 miles per hour. Ride upon a paved trail or sidewalk less than five feet wide at a speed greater than 10 miles per hour. Or ride upon an unpaved trail or sidewalk at a speed that is dangerous, unsafe, or reckless under any circumstance. And again, that was requested by the Oakdale Trails folks, who indicated that they believed that, pretty much no matter what people would be riding at the speed, they felt comfortable with in the unpaid trails.
Comments?
Manager will make a, like a, a brand-new ADA-compliant sidewalk is five feet?
Yes.
Right, but all of our older sidewalks are gonna be less than that, sometimes as narrow as three?
Correct. Mr. Church, how wide are those paved trails?
Eight to 10 feet, wasn't a 10-foot.
To, to me, 15 feels pretty comfortable on those wider paths. And then when on a sidewalk, you wanna, but again, the sign's gonna say 10, but it's gonna be.
Fast as it'll go.
I think that would be the hope, the hope would be that with good signage and education, you can get people to at least be aware that they shouldn't really be going max, but.
We can't even get them to not drive the wrong way on the road, on the side of the road.
Or pick up their, after their pets, or anything else, right?
Correct, like, I, and we're not gonna be putting speed limit signs at every sidewalk, at every corner either, you know what I mean? Like, there's not, that, that's not gonna happen. Like, we're not putting speed limit signs for bicycles at the sidewalks. So, I mean, I don't, we do need better signage downtown for sure, because it's way up here, and it doesn't really say, you know, so you don't see it. It needs to be made more clear downtown, but, you know, I just, I, I don't mind the speed limit. It is a cover-your-butt-and-a-liability situation, because, you know, the kids probably go faster than 10 miles an hour, you know, when they're racing, trying to get somewhere fast, right? And I don't want.
Any young adult?
The small kids, I don't want on the side of the road either, so.
So I'm hearing no objection to that language at this time. So I'll make the appropriate changes that Mr. Atwood has asked for. Now refer this to Mayor, to the city attorney for review, and we'll hope to have this in front of you at your next meeting as a proposed draft ordinance.
Okay. Is there any other, Commissioner Atwood?
We have the electric dirt bikes covered under this, right?
Yeah, so, anything that's been hot-rodded above a Class 3 is treated as either an electric motorcycle or an electric dirt bike. Essentially the same thing, but using the same rules that you were discussing, the ORV must have stoplights, must have headlights, I think. But I use the different ordinance under Section 257. Ms. Swindell indicated the assembled vehicle ordinance. I think I used the motorcycle ordinance. But yeah, that would, that's the intention of the ordinance, is that anything that's been hot-rodded above would be treated as either a motorcycle or an ORV.
Dirt bikes aren't hot-rodded typically, they're just.
Well, okay, hot-rodded, that's more than what you can get through Class 1, Class 2, or Class 3. Doesn't have to necessarily be modified, but anything that can go faster than 28, anything that's got more than 750 watts of power, there's another requirement. But anything that exceeds those limitations would be considered either an electric motorcycle, or electric dirt bike, or electric ORV.
Do we also have to have anything in there about gas dirt bikes?
So I, I did put something in there about, you can't drive a gasoline-powered vehicle on the sidewalks, which could be problematic for, because I've seen at least one person who uses a, a riding lawnmower for transportation.
There's a couple people on, on many bikes.
Yeah, many bikes.
Mayor, the, I think the language of dirt bike is, is maybe not, is not the, the best definition. I think moped might be something that would be better suited, because there's a Michigan.
Are you use both?
Yeah, well, I, like, what you listed up for, for a moped is 750 watts, up to 30 miles an hour, or, or 49 cc, or 50 cc's.
Yeah, I think that was one of the earlier drafts, like, that language is not in there anymore in moped.
I just know that the, like, the Michigan laws reference a moped.
Sure, and, and that's why.
I think that's in the stuff I sent you, that reference that he's talking about.
Well, I'll double-check it, but I'm pretty sure that language came out a while back, but, that's why it's complicated. There's a whole section under state law that we have for review to make sure that we're, you know, doing the right thing here. Like I said, that guy at the end of the table, he's pretty smart, he can help us button it up, figure it out.
Mike, I just have one, one concern, and that's where it says, unless otherwise posted, no person shall ride upon unpaved trail or sidewalk at any speed that is dangerous, unsafe, or reckless. Under the circumstances, who's the, like, who's gonna determine? Because a kid might say it wasn't reckless, or it wasn't dangerous to them.
Sure.
So what, who, who determines that?
Well, not everybody has their own reality, despite what politics.
Well, I'd, I'd like to think that.
I'd like to think that a police officer would be able to make a determination.
That's what I'm asking, so will it be, I, I'm just thinking if somebody were injured, who gets to, whose perspective is that?
Well, I mean, if it's observed by a police officer, right, they can testify that they believe that it was reckless under the circumstances. You know, in, in a court, the weight of the testimony is gonna be given based upon witness. And if you've got two people suing each other, and one says, oh, he was driving reckless, well, yeah, but you're suing him for 10 million bucks, right? There's not a lot of weight to that testimony. So this is really designed for the police officer to, or the judge to determine whether.
To determine, that's what I.
Okay. And that's it for now.
Thank you.
Okay. And that is Mr. Francis, do you have a city attorney's report for us?
I'd love to know, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appointments to boards. No, my paper, God, here it is. Okay, under the mayoral appointment for the downtown development authority, I would like to recommend Gerald Gackey, G. Gackey, for that position. With the term ending January 1st, 2026, I'd like two motions to do so.
And then, Mayor, make a motion to appoint Gerald Gackey to the DDA in the room, January 1st, 2026.
Court.
Motion was made by Commissioner Swindell, and supported by Commissioner Atwood, for discussion regarding that appointment.
I just have one, one question. The DDA's notes here say that they recommend that in the event the city commission does not remove Adam Perry from the DDA, that Gerald Gackey, Gackey be appointed. What does that mean, that we are?
To me, when I read that, that was.
Yeah, I, I just want clarification.
Incorrect. My understanding was that there is an opening, which is Gerald, were, would be filled by Gerald Gackey. Adam Perry was appointed, I don't know, six, eight months ago, and the chairman, Catherine Bostick, and Jim Alt have tried to get ahold of him. If that position becomes open, then there's another person that they have for the application that will fill that spot. But this, but the, those minutes, which are not approved yet, does not really, was not clear. I was part of the motion, that was not clear. So, the, there's a vacancy, and currently, the only person that's eligible at this point is Gerald Gackey, and he was chosen over the others. Mostly, it wasn't that the other person is a great, wonderful, it's just that his application was in first. So they're both excellent candidates.
I believe he's also on a few other boards.
He's on a different board.
On a different board.
Any other questions we could have? Okay, so, all those in favor of the motion, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That motion's scary. And that's all I have on the appointments this evening. My question in your packet was, any other information on the DDA monthly report? So then that brings us back to public comments. Would anybody like to make a public comment at this time? Okay, same on there, then we can go into closing comments. Commissioner Glissman.
Well, yeah, I always get to go first.
Not always, but it's supposed to.
Good information, give us usually.
First of all, I hope everyone has enjoyed this autumn that we've had so far. The weather has been absolutely fabulous, and I hope you've enjoyed this sunny, warm weather, and I guess tomorrow we lose it. Don't forget to look at the moon tonight, it's a hunter's full moon tonight, and it's supposed to be beautiful, so let's hope it doesn't get cloudy. Work continues on the Lapeer Lilac Project. I have several lilac bushes that I have donated to the city that need to be planted soon. So Director Church and I will have to find the perfect place for them. It is the time to do fall planting. I have a summary brochure, and if you didn't get one tonight, I have brochures for everybody who is here. And the committee is looking forward to adding new members to help plan the final project. Also, a reminder about America 250. Obviously, it's not too far away, and it start, and it's a good time to start, and I, I'm hoping that when we do the budget for 2026, we include America 250 in the big birthday party. The correct term, I, I found this on the internet today, the correct term for the 250th anniversary is semi-quincennial. I'll say it again, semi-quincennial. This celebration marks 250 years since the Declaration of Independence, and everybody in this room knows that. In preparation of our 250th anniversary of the United States of America, I will give a famous quote from one of our founding fathers at each of our meetings. Today's quote comes from our first president, George Washington, and this is what he said. "It is impossible to govern the world without God. It is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, to be grateful for His benefits, and humbly implore His protection and favor." So amen, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Petrie.
I have a comment to make.
Commissioner Petrie?
I really only have a couple comments. One, it was in the paper about the leaf pickup, and I know probably Ross doesn't wanna hear this, but if it isn't gonna start till November, I'm nervous, because we've already had so many leaves fall because of it being dry. I had people knock on my door and call my phone so much last year. I don't wanna deal with that again, so I'm wondering what we can do, why we aren't doing it like we used to with the leaf pickup within, it was three to four days, and then your street got ready for it. Looking at this, there's no schedule, it just says we're gonna do street by street, and I'm just wondering how will, you know, how will we know when to rake our leaves out? Are we gonna, our, our street's gonna say, hey, yours is coming next week? I just, this was a little vague.
So I can answer that. Mr. Slusher and I are very aware of that concern, and, you know, obviously, we wanna provide the public with the, the knowledge about when to rake the leaves of the street. I know probably the worst thing is to put all that work in, and then it's like a week and a half before they get picked up, and now they get blown away by a swallup, right? The problem is, there's like one really huge neighborhood where like 90% of the leaves are, and then there's, you know, like the rest of the city. So I think what we're planning on doing is, like, Monday they're gonna start this quadrant, they'll go through all the streets, and then whatever time they have left over, they'll go back to the huge neighborhood. And then they'll cycle through that way. That way, each of the individual neighborhoods will kinda know when they're up next, what day of the week. But the one big neighborhood, they're just, we can't do that unless we do some really funky drawing of the map. So that's our current plan.
I just, we're the city of trees, so I'm trying to think what neighborhood you're referring to, 'cause every street downtown is filled with leaves, so I just wonder.
Well, but we don't.
I mean, like, are we doing it? I don't know. I, I just, I'm just concerned about the residents and raking their leaves, you know, five times for one pickup or whatever, just concerned about the residents. One more question. Thank you for coming in about the recycling, and you probably have already looked into this, but I'm wondering if you've talked to the people that own Durcon, it's close to where you were, and it's huge. And I think there's more than one entrance and exit. And also Mayfield School, 'cause that's fairly close to where you were, too.
Yeah, Mayfield is, we don't live too far from there, it's just too small, for that many cars, and it doesn't go all the way around. We would love it if we could.
Okay, I just wanted to offer that.
I appreciate that, thank you so much.
Commissioner Swindell.
Commissioner Atwood. I have nothing to add. You guys are saving all your time for me, I appreciate that.
Well, don't take it all.
So Mr. O'Malley.
Have to cook dinner, yes.
I don't have any historical events, so I apologize, Melinda, for that. I don't have any historical events, so I apologize, Melinda, for that. But this month has my wife's birthday, my sister's birthday, my anniversary, my birthday, and my favorite holiday. So every year, I ask my staff, thank you, Ms. Liddensky, and Hallowe'en Day. This is a big, important thing for me. So every year, the number one day of the year that kids are run over by cars is Halloween Day. So every year, we give away lighted up whatevers, you know.
That's cool.
Rings, lights, you know, all sorts of stuff. So come to Public Safety Building, come to City Hall, we will have this for your kids. Please stop by and talk to somebody and ask for it, we'll be happy to give away. And that's all I got.
What is the pink brace like?
Pretty sure that. Anyways, we gave a whole bunch of these out last year too, but they only last a little while, so. Ms. Liddensky, any thoughts on that, comments?
Excellent. It's an excellent idea, great way to make our, have our children be safer in the city of LaPierre. Okay, I just have a couple announcements for the local events coming up. The East LaPierre Farmers Market will continue until the end of October at twelve oh three in My City Road. The historic Farmers Market will also continue until October twenty-fifth and that's from nine thirty to three thirty downtown LaPierre. You know, stop by there. And the Kiwanis Club of LaPierre for the Fantasy Forest is Saturday, October eleventh from eleven AM to four. And that's all I have for tonight. Congratulations again to Tim, Tom, Tom Wiki for his forty-year loss to the city of LaPierre. So with that, there's no further business on the agenda. I adjourn the meeting. Thank.